Good evening, we welcome you here at the West Valley City Council Meeting, our regular meeting. Since it is 6:30, we can start. We note that we have all council members participating tonight. So a full quorum. With that, we will begin as we have been doing now traditionally for quite a while. To what we had called the Inside the City videos. And we'll begin with that.
Do you guys like cute furry things? Yeah, I love the whole cute furry things, right?
But we are happy to have Scales and Tals, Shane and Rindy here from Scales and Tals, a West Valley business that has always been a good member of our community, coming out and doing shows and supporting us in our Parks Department. We also have with us Lindsay, who's made the news everywhere.
Yeah, this video was shot by Teresa Wiseman. You can see what's happening right here, Scales and Tals.
And also Amy and Todd Christopher, who helped her and rendered aid to her. And Lindsay tells me she's doing fine. Everybody's here. They've recovered emotionally and otherwise, and think the alligator's doing okay too. Little disappointed perhaps.
Well, I opened the enclosure door to do just a routine feeding demonstration with Darth Vader. And I asked him to go back into his water, which is a command we're kind of working on. He came forward instead of going back. And with the public being there, I went ahead and just manually pushed him back. But this time his head slipped off my hand and my hand ended up touching the outside of his jaw. He was kind of in food mode, so he thought, there's my food and grabbed it and then really lashed down once he realized there was something in his mouth. At which point I was pretty on my toes thinking the next step is potentially a roll. So I was really keeping my eyes open, watching exactly what he was doing, waiting for that to happen. As soon as he started behaving like he might, that's when I climbed into the enclosure and then just did my best to fight it off, but once he rolled, just rolled with him. It'd be a lot harder to stay calm if you were walking along the street and an alligator bit you or something, you know what I mean? It's not like it was a surprise really. Obviously a possibility when you're working with them and something that I'd gone over in my head before. I guess that's probably what enabled me to stay calm through it.
Thank you. Amazing video. Good to have a happy outcome with that. Next, we have our minutes of September 14th for the minutes of our regular city council meeting.
I move for approval of our regular city council meeting minutes.
Okay, property for us, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection, that was unanimous. Now we have our public comment period. Several people have signed up. Although apart from our public comment period, we will have a special hearing on the Holiday Oil request for property at 6443 West 3500 South. If you're here to speak to that, you can do that. We'll have a separate public comment period for just that. For that one, the only thing you can talk about is that particular issue. Public comments are for all the other stuff that's not on our agenda. So with that, we'll start with all the other stuff. So Karma Lloyd, are you here for just regular or? Or Holiday Oil?
Holiday Oil.
Okay. Then we go to Jim Vissok. We have Jim and Daryl. Well, Lindy, Lindy is for? For the Holiday Oil. Yeah, everyone's for that. Well, Jim is for here every week, so I know he's got a lot on his mind, so.
No, not a lot. Last week I talked about the outside of the West Valley Family Fitness Center. This week I'm going to ring up the inside. And once again, I've already been to the Director of West Valley Family Fitness and to the Head of Park and Recs with these concerns. And I've even written an email that I included to the council member over this area. The inside and they're blaming staffing. The men's locker room and since I can't get into the ladies locker room, but I've been told by ladies while I'm in the water rowies classes, they are not being cleaned thoroughly on a daily basis. I know the lockers for a fact are not being cleaned. I have pictures, dated pictures. They did change some shower curtains. They were disgusting. In my email that I sent to Nancy and to Councilwoman Lang, I showed the curtains and how disgusting they were. Everybody knows I've done several citizens police academies. We did a tour of the jail. Their showers are spotless. Why can't West Valley City have the same thing? One of the ladies I was talking to in the last week, while we're in the pool, saying, why don't they go in there with a pressure washer and wash it all down? To clean it up. Today, one brings it up to me and says, hey Jim, I got something. I brought it up three times at the front desk and hasn't been fixed. In the family changing room, the four in the middle, somebody's has taken feces with their, it looks like with their fingers and put it up on the wall. I went in there after I did my workout, took a picture of it. It's there. If they're doing, Nancy sent out this schedule and copied Mr. Pyle in it of what they're supposed to be doing every single hour, three or four times a day. If they're doing that, somebody should have noticed that and it shouldn't have been one of our residents who's working out in the pool that notices that. Things are going downhill at the, at the Family Fitness Center. Once again, it's one of our crown jewels of the city. I know there's staffing issues, but when you see the head of maintenance sitting at the front desk, at the times I'm leaving, I don't know if he's on the clock yet or whatever, but if he's in the facility, to me, he's on the clock. That's a concern, so. You know, the trash in the front, why do we need three people behind the front desk? It's never that busy where they have to, you know, check in so many people. Let them go out there and at least pick up the trash when you're walking in. Everybody sees this. And once again, I call it the jewel of the city, but we need to treat it like the jewel and keep it clean, especially with the COVID stuff going on right now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Daryl Curtis. You'll do Holiday Oil. Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in our regular public comment? Oh, Mike Markham.
Sorry, came in late. I just want to thank y'all for the quick response on the wall issue, on that vinyl fence issue. If I had a nice place like that, I'd put up a fence too. But if I'd spent millions of dollars on a building, not a problem, but a little bit nicer wall than the vinyl, but that's, that's their choice. Yeah, I appreciate the quick response on that. You know, that was a good answer. The park issue where that got taken care of in a hurry, appreciate that. We must have some either code enforcement or parking people out there because this morning driving back from getting my COVID test, I don't know if it was a parking person or code enforcement because the vehicle was, was a motorhome parked partially in the street and partially on the, on the curbing. So I don't know if that was a parking person issue or if it was a code enforcement person, they were driving a full-size truck. So at least somebody's out there doing something. But I think instead of just kind of talking about it, I'll just start sending y'all like an email. So that you can, if, if you're interested, you can drive by and, and take a look at the semi truck that's being overhauled in the driveway and, and everything else you could imagine would go along with the semi truck, all their spare tires, smokers. I don't know why some of these things can't be fixed, but apparently it's acceptable. So appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close our regular public comment period. We will now go to our public hearing. This is on application GPZ-72020 filed by Holiday Oil. This is on property at 6443 West 3500 South. And this is a request to change. Oh, okay. Assistant City Manager for Public Comment skipped you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Nothing today. Thank you.
See, I missed it just so she could say, no. Okay, now the council will probably tell me no too, but we'll, maybe someone will actually make a comment.
I just want to say, Mayor, that I appreciate you jumping back into the agenda in its proper order. Appreciate Tom for bringing that to your attention. The rest of us were too shy.
Well, usually Don tells me, but he's, I don't know if he was asleep or what, but. Of course, I sleep all the time, but anyway, so let's see. Back to our next public hearing. The proposal on this property that Holiday Oil is working with is to change the general plan to do a zoning change and enter into a development agreement. And we'll deal with each of those issues separately since they're on our agenda. Ordinance 21-56 and 57 and Resolution 21-167. The proposal is to take a piece of property that is by the existing Holiday Oil, where there's a home and expand the property to include that area with modifications to the existing footprint. By expanding, they would, I believe, if I remember correctly, generally they're going to move the car wash. They're going to do some expansion of pumps, things like that, but it will still be a Holiday Oil just on a bigger footprint. And that's probably all I'll say on it, although the council, if they want to highlight anything else, can. Anything else you want to specifically mention? Otherwise, we will then open public comment period for whoever would like to speak to this issue. We do have limits on our public comment, but not here. So you'll note there's no timer. Although if you go past nine o'clock, I just may leave. I don't know, so. With that then, we'll take those who signed up. Lindy Boydin. We got closer this time. If you keep coming, I'll eventually get it exactly right.
I'll keep coming.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to get that spot over here, so I'll be, I'll be coming. Trying to learn the ropes here. Okay. The Holiday Oil is located near my house. I pass that a lot and it's very busy. It's a very busy place. It's, it's a good place to go. It's a successful business and they want to accommodate their customers and make the flow with the traffic safer. As you come in, there'll be two, two ways to come in, in the back and in the front, and it'll make it a lot safer and better. And I think it's a good thing. And I wish more businesses on 3500 would get an uplift and facelift and do some improvements. I think it's important and I think it's important that we support our businesses. And I think it's your job to support the businesses as well as the residents. And as for the residents near the oil gas station, I think they're already inconvenienced. And they have been inconvenienced because when you live next to a gas station and you're that close, you have to put up with a lot of stuff. And it's, it is an inconvenience. It's a nuisance. And this isn't going to change that. There's still going to be that factor. It's not going to make it better or it's not going to make it worse. I think that they have adapted and they find solutions. And I think the fence is a good solution. It's a six-foot fence. And I think that, and it's a concrete fence and it will help with the sound, the noise, the light. And I think you should approve it. And I think if you disapprove it, it'll be a disservice, disadvantage for the customers and the home and the business owner. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karma Lloyd.
Okay, I'm here representing neighbors of Holiday Oil. And first of all, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I live just two houses west of Holiday Oil. And the rezoning that they would like to do. And I'm here to ask you please not to let them expand farther into our neighborhood. The stated purpose of the C1 zoning is misleading, I think. It says, and I read from the stated purpose. The purpose of the C1 commercial zone is to provide areas for lower intensity neighborhood commercial development that accommodates the everyday needs of nearby residents. Such zones do not usually generate traffic from regional markets. And to me, that's misleading because that's the whole purpose that they want, they want to get more customers, more people coming. And safety is definitely a very big concern in our neighborhood. The intersection currently fails in all directions. There is no turning arrow in any direction. The only arrow, this only allows one or possibly two vehicles to turn on a red light. After the light has turned red, then we can turn west or whichever direction we're going. And this is a problem both day and night to us. The congestion which exists is particularly bad at rush hour and on Saturdays. If rezoning is allowed and the store and gas station expanded, then the safety problem will increase. This fact alone has a huge safety impact to our neighborhood. If this plan moves ahead, our children will not be safe because of a lack of privacy. Strangers will be able to see into the backyards of at least five families as their children play in their backyards. The car wash blower which goes off in the middle of the night wakes people up, starting in the middle of the night. The existing wells and underground water will possibly be affected by the two additional gas pumps that they want to install. And my understanding is these are diesel pumps, which brings the total of 10 gas pumps and all. So it's pretty hard to convince myself as well as my neighbors that this will not increase traffic, noise, lights and litter, which we constantly have to pick up from people who have just shopped at Holiday Oil because they buy treats and goodies and things like this and just throw them down as they walk past my home. The people who own Holiday Oil will not be affected because they don't live in our neighborhood. But the people who do live care a lot. The question seems to be how many guests, how many tanks of gas, gallons of milk, bottles of beer, slurpees and chocolate donuts? Do they have to sell in order to meet their quota? This project, if approved, will have a horrendous effect on our neighborhood. When do we say enough is enough? Is this project necessary or desirable? For the neighbors and community, the answer is a resounding no. All of our current problems will just get bigger and be more unbearable. Please do not approve the rezoning of this residential property. And I have one for the thing that I want to bring up, which was brought up at either the last meeting or the one before it, and I can't remember which. But that is that the requirement for landscaping of this new property that Holiday Oil will be rezoning is 13 feet. And that's a law that's on the books. However, Holiday Oil is only proposing that they will be able to supply seven feet. This puts the landscaping in violation and it's not acceptable. In fact, the entire project is not, is very unacceptable to us neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Neal.
Yeah. So I think I might be the most unpopular person in the room right now. So I, my name is Brent Neal and I'm with Holiday Oil. And I don't know if you want me to go first or have everyone else go first and address some concerns or questions. Okay.
If we need to, we can call anyone back.
Okay, perfect.
And ask questions.
Yeah. So first of all, thanks for letting us come tonight to present our case and to kind of, like I said, answer concerns. Appreciate the comments thus far. So addressing some of the safety concerns, I'll get to that in a second. But we are a convenience store and our sole purpose is to make it convenient for our customers to be able to be as safe as they can around the property itself. So I've been to that location many times over the last six months, just doing a sidewalk. I don't know if I mentioned my role as the project manager for new construction and remodel. And while doing the sidewalk and working with the residential owner to the west of us, I'm assuming you guys have seen the site plan and have seen our proposed layout of moving the car wash. So with that being convenient, it's, we feel it is a little constricted right now as it sits, just with people coming off of 3500 South, trying to maneuver around the facility, entering out on 6400 West. And this new site layout and according to a traffic study that we have proposed will improve flow of the traffic on the property. And it will also allow better flow going on to 3500 South. So in the stacking periods of the peak hours of the traffic, it'll be easier for people to come, easier for people to get on to 3500 South. With the increased traffic, the traffic study shows that an additional four cars will enter the property during peak hours of the AM and the PM combined. So we don't anticipate, I mean naturally cars will become, you know, it'll be a busier with 3500 South expanding, with Mountain View Corridor coming down on the west side. I think naturally it will expand and get busy. But that's going to happen anyway with the convenience store there as it sits. And so if we're able to get the people maneuvering around the site a little bit easier, in my opinion, that will make it safer for a gas station already be in there. And the reason why we want to expand is not too often where we get approached by saying with a property that is directly behind our, one of our car washes or behind one of our C stores. So that store worked 30 years ago very well. Nowadays cars are a little bit larger, trucks, more larger SUVs. And with it being constrained, we feel that it is beneficial for the customers, for the people in the neighborhood, and it will make it safer for people maneuvering around the site. I don't know if there's any specific questions you guys had that I, that you could ask in particular, or if there's anything else that needs to be said, but I'm only, yeah, if we want to listen to other people's comments and if I need to get called up again, I'm more willing to come up, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe there was one more, Daryl Curtis.
Yeah, Daryl Curtis, 3860 South Marcha Drive. I went over and visited with a couple of the neighbors and asked them how they felt about the, the property and everything. The neighbor is directly to the, the, the south of, of the property. It's an elevation change from six feet up to eight feet. So their fence is two feet higher. So even a six-foot fence is not going to really make a difference for them. If it was eight, 10 feet higher on that side, it would make it a lot better for, for the neighbors and the community there. The person directly to the, the south of, of the property, he has children. He's concerned for their safety because their elevation is up higher. They, people can see them, concerned for them, trash. There's constantly picking up trash that is thrown over the fence. So a higher fence would, you know, maybe not stop it, but it would maybe hinder that taking place. And the current car wash, it blocks the people from even seeing the, the other house. And that's, you know, 12, 14 feet high. So now you're talking 14 feet high, you're lowering it down to six feet. So there's cars is going to be shining their windows or their car lights right directly into the neighbors' windows. The other thing that I'd like to point out is even the car wash, if it goes around to the, to the back, that's fine, as long as the, the exit from the car wash is going, exiting north onto 35th South, because if it comes, comes through the car wash, then this, again, this, the lights from the cars are going to be shining on the, the people directly to the south. And finally, they reported that the car wash was, was being used even late hours. And so the people behind could hear the fan going on at two in the morning. So, you know, there, there would need to be some restrictions on when the car wash could be used. But this was their concerns. They were unable to come and participate in this. So I just want you to be aware of those concerns of the citizens directly around the car wash. Thank you.
Anyone else? Since we didn't have you sign up, would you give your name and address?
Yeah, it's Rebecca Riggs and I'm 3529 South and 6470 West. So my backyard is right up against Holiday Oil. The property that they're talking about taking is right behind us. And I actually might be unpopular, but I don't mind that it, that it happens. My concern is like they were talking about the elevation. We, my house is kind of on a slope. And so currently we cannot see Holiday Oil because they've got a shed and they've got all kinds of stuff going on in their backyard. And but as that moves, it will be sloped up. And so I, for one, definitely think that there should be more lights. You know, I have, I have young girls and it just makes me concerned that somebody would be able to see into our backyard or. And so I have concerns with that, but I, so I would like a higher fence and also more lighting. And so I, I have concerns with that, but I, so I would like a higher fence and also more lighting. Um cuz it is already, now it's so loud and there's already, there's a home in between us and there's sheds and. Um it's just really loud, so that's, that's my plea is just for a higher fence and definitely more security lighting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Visok. Um last week after the study meeting, when I left, I was asked the question, um if I was sitting on that diocese. Um would I vote for it? And last week when I left, I probably would have been a vote for it. But once again, after doing my research, going out there, seeing it. This is not something that I would um vote for if I was sitting up there amongst you guys. Once again, the, the, all the traffic issues. But the noise issues, the in and out of there. It is like these people from the neighborhood said. It's gonna bring more people in there. Why do they need two more gas things? One thing I brought up um after the meeting, the study meeting last week. Was I didn't see any electrical stuff going for electric cars. You know, in the next ten years, a lot of electrical. If they were gonna be allowed to do this upgrade, there should be some electrical stations at least included in this. We think that they would have thought ahead on that. So um, once again, last week, I probably would have been a vote, right now I'm saying, hopefully you guys turn this down. I don't think it's the, the right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing or hearing no one else, oh. It is permissible for someone to speak more than once. So it's entirely up to you if you want to speak or not.
Yeah, so going to a charging station, so thirty years ago, we never knew we would get to this point. I mean, I know there's push from the current administration. By twenty-thirty, so yes, right now we have nothing for charging stations. On every new build that we're doing throughout the state, we are running all the conduit, we're running all the, everything we need in the future to run to the dispensers. So if there, there ever comes a time to remove the gas dispenser or the fuel dispenser, we can have charging stations right there on the spot. So as the site currently sits, yeah, we won't have anything and then when the time comes and we'll have to charge, change everything over at one time. But if we are able to do the remodel, then we're able to bring that new conduit to assist charging stations. Um addressing the lady's comments about lighting. Um so we have a photometric plan that our engineer comes up with that we submit also to the city for the city engineer to approve. Where we try to keep all lighting on site as much as possible. So with the new lights that we have at all of our new stores, with the area lights, we're able to control that much more. Or, or much better and that will allow the site to be lit up a lot better. I don't know if you guys have seen. Our store on forty-one hundred South and thirty-five-hundred West, that did a complete remodel. Um I think a year and a half ago, two years ago, and you should have seen a noticeable difference as far as the area lights making it. The, the security much better. Um. I think if there was other things, was there anything else? The fence, so right now code says six-foot fence. Um we have done eight-foot fences elsewhere, so that is something that the city does consider or wants to do, that is something that we're open to as far as an eight-foot fence. Along the residential and the commercial property line, but. So any other questions or?
Uh how about the noise, you know, so the trash, I, I heard a couple of people. I spoke uh earlier, how you tackle those.
So the noise, the, I mean, if it's a six-foot fence compared to eight-foot fence on the masonry wall, that will, you know, keep most of the noise on our site. It is an operating business, so there is noise that we just can't, we can't do away with. I mean, the car wash will go off. Whether that's at eight at night, ten at night, sometimes we, occasionally we get people coming through at two in the morning. That is just something that is operationally. Um gas, it is increasing one more pump or one more canopy pole, so two more dispensers. And, and again, our traffic study doesn't show it's gonna be bringing in that many more people on site. I mean, the traffic, the gas station is there now. And I, I, I keep hearing safety concerns, but in my opinion, if it's a site where it's more easy to maneuver around. Where you have access to go around the, the C store as well to get on to thirty-five-hundred West. I mean, if you ever tried backing up as it currently is out of the stall, it is tight, so if there are kids walking around or whatnot, then. I, in my opinion, looking at the overall site, it is much safer with the cars driving around. But.
A couple more question and then ask you. You, you saying it because you try to do something here because the business is uh picking up more than.
So our sales have stayed consistent for the last five years of this store.
Uh huh.
So we're not doing it and so to speak to gain an extra twenty percent margin or twenty percent profit. Um like I said earlier, it's just, it, it doesn't come up too often, we're able to expand a property. So we're doing this mainly to get the C store a little bit larger.
Uh huh.
Um just to redo it, to get the bathrooms and things just a little bit wider. And then again, just to be able to have the traffic move a little more freely around the site. But yeah, I mean, as of right now, we don't see sales going up. It stayed pretty consistent over the last five years.
Okay.
So are you saying this project was initiated by the uh property owner to the west wanting to sell you the property and move on?
So he should be on the YouTube right now listening, but uh they approached us, the, they actually worked for us for about nine years. And they asked if we would be interested and so we went into agreement with them. I'm not sure how much in detail I can get in that, but it's been going for about two years. And we've done about six addendums to keep it extending. Um whether that's from UDOT approval, that was our biggest hiccup, was making sure we can get the access off of thirty-five-hundred South. Cuz without that access off thirty-five-hundred South, it wouldn't make any sense to e- expand the property. And so we have got UDOT approval as far as consolidating the two accesses, it's a U-shaped driveway. So to consolidate down and that down into one fifty-foot access. Therefore allowing more larger trucks or any kind of vehicle to turn in there easier than the current access.
Um I just wanna confirm with you again, so he initially came over to you and asked you for buying his property.
If we would be interested.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we were, we were interested just cuz it, it doesn't come up too often.
Yeah, because that's a nice house, you know what I'm saying, but the, okay.
So, yeah, anything else or?
Okay, I don't see anymore, so.
I can come up again if you, if you need me to, okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, got, another one wants to speak again, which is fine.
Yeah, the, the property owner, I did talk to them and, and they entered into a contract two years ago and at the time, the contract was for selling the house for four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And now the, the price of their property is worth six-hundred-and-ten thousand, so they will lose a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars roughly. Because it, nothing has moved on this and they were just concerned about that. It is a four-thousand square foot home. And um, and just, you know, they, they will, even though they approached it two years ago, it still is a concern now that they're gonna lose so much, so thank you.
Is there anyone else? Are we done with the public comment? Looks like it. With that then, we bring it back to the council.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, is to start off our discussion. I just want to uh explain that for me, my vote's not gonna be based upon who's making any money or not making enough money or. It's not gonna be based on the design, the height of the wall, the number of uh gas pumps, as with any rezoning. My vote is gonna be based upon, is this something being brought to the city that's special enough that we should rezone a property? And. That's what I'm basing every zoning vote on. Not that, does this make sense? Is this okay? Is it better than what we had? But is this special enough to rezone a property? Because everybody can build and remodel and. Adjust the uh property that they own or that they acquire in accordance with the existing zoning. And I just think it needs to be special in order to involve the city council and change things.
So I think, excuse me, my concerns is, are. The one extra pump being so close to the residence on the south. I think that's just an extra burden and then the. The car wash and its positioning. I just think with that extra amount of property being so exposed to the other homes, I just think that is a. A big enough change for those residents that I don't think we should move forward with this at this time. If we did move forward, I would definitely say no pump to the south end, limited hours on the car wash. I don't think it needs to go all night, being so close to residential. And I know we've had other commercial built um properties close to residential that were a burden. And we've limited their hours and it's worked well to make it less impact on the. Residents next door. So just because a business does something doesn't mean it's. Um at other locations that it's appropriate to do it here.
Maybe a clarification on that at this point? Is that even a possibility to put, place noise restrictions? If they're already in existence and have been for years?
So because this is a um zone text, uh zone rezon, and because we have a development agreement. You could do that. I think you could easily require those couple of things by motion and we could add those to the development agreement.
We could do that if they, as part of the development agreement or something, but if we, if this isn't approved. We can't, can we go back and put noise restrictions on?
Oh, um well, yes, you can always change the ordinance as a council, yes sir.
And so it's currently within the ordinance what they're doing.
Yeah, uh I, I would have to assess that to know if they were complying with the ordinance or not, sorry sir.
Okay, just asking, trying to figure this all out. You know, this is a, is a, is a great experience because we get a lot of information. And interestingly enough, some of the information presented tonight was contradictory. And uh it makes uh it more challenging to know what the exact information is. If this not, is not approved, everything stays as it is. So there'll still be trash, unfortunately, it's not the business doing it, but. People throwing trash over the fence, there'll still be the traffic, there'll still be the lights, there'll still be the noise. Not, uh, it just won't change. So uh, that's an issue. Maybe we could solve it. Uh by putting some requirements in, but that would take some effort on our part. Uh to try and correct some of these problems. But the problems that exist now will continue to exist. Will the new format, the new proposal change that? Some of them, yes, some of them, it'll make it worse, like the not having the car wash there. And I'm like, okay, anyway, it'll still stay a commercial place. And it will, in my opinion, probably forever. Even if Maverick were to change or sell out or do anything. Excuse me, holiday, sorry about that. Maverick Center here, I always have it on my mind. Uh the holiday oil, it will still stay commercial and it will still most likely be a service station. And there's still be light problem, trash problem, uh traffic problem. So it's just kind of interesting in how you put that in perspective. And I'll tell you truthfully, there is not actually a right and a wrong answer. There's a preference answer. I, now council may disagree with me, but you know, over the period of the next thirty years, I, I don't think it will. Substantially change things either way that we go. So, but preferences do enter into this very significantly. For example, for someone who is concerned about. Uh the sightlines, that may be enough for them to vote for. Uh or vote against this project, that may be the tipping point. I don't know, so you're going to see probably everyone up here, their reasons for voting for it varying. But these are always, always fascinating because. Um you know, we still need in our city to be able to have customers. In fact, when I go to ribbon cuttings, I say our cu- our citizens want services. They want to be able to gas up near home, they want to be able to go to the grocery store relatively close to their home. So we have to allow some of that. Cuz we don't want them to have to drive to another city to do it. So it's just interesting, I thought you'd use that. I'm sorry, I wax a little eloquent, but I won't get to do it too much more. So the, the council has to suffer through this, so you know, anyway. And any of you can wax eloquent as well. I just wax.
Yeah, yeah, I, I. Um here, I just wanna bring it to you, all of you. One of future case will run into the similar situation like this case. Forty-one or a cell and the redwood road, the corner right there. The Smith is right now very much just packed for the population we have in that corner. But we just pass a resolution allow to have a apartment complex or condo, sorry, I can't remember which one. But I think it's four oh five units in that quarter. So that mean four oh five units in that corner gonna be, the Smith have to make it bigger. Uh, uh, you know, I, I, I believe this case gonna come up here, the next two years or three years, we will see that. Have it make it bigger, the same thing with this case, have it make it bigger to, basically the man is high and they have to support that. Have to find way to do that. And the problem like Mayor says is the noise is still there and the trash, that's a problem, it's still right there. And how are we gonna solve this problem? That's a very interesting point. I, I don't know how gonna do that, but I know for sure that case gonna come up here the next three years. Uh huh, the same situation because of population increase in that corner. And there's the people, they have to go shopping, they just right across the street from there. And four oh five units right there, it's a lot of people. And Smith right now, it's just small, cannot have that many people in that uh store for four oh five units more. In that corner, so you know, very fascinating.
Just like to say, Mayor, that uh to piggyback on what you said, most of our decisions, in fact, it's hard to think of decisions that are. Really a choice between good and evil. Most of them are uh judgments and hopefully representative judgments of what's best for the community and that's why there are seven of us. Often we don't vote in unison and, you know, the majority prevails and then that's what happens because uh. But we're all the time between good and evil, it would sure be a lot easier and probably less, less necessary.
Well now, listening to this, I guess I should disclose. Years ago, my father ran a gas station and I helped him in it. In fact, we lived in the back of a gas station for a couple of years. And uh, and our regular home that we lived in, the whole time I was growing across, growing up. Was across the street from a gas station, we lived on the main highway, so. Uh some of the concerns are a little hard for me cuz having lived there and lived in it. I kinda have a different perspective, which is clearly skewed, okay? I, I understand that, so anyway. Well, anyone wanna do anything at this point or should we talk about it some more?
I will move for denial of ordinance twenty-one dash fifty-six.
Second. Properly before us, any further comment? Then to our city, oh wait a minute.
Yep, she's just online.
Yeah, she's online, but I don't see her here, so.
I'm here, Mayor.
You're, you're there, okay, there I see, and so is Jake. Usually they show the pictures and so, there we go. Thank you. To our city recorder then for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fifty-Samani.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Hi.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
May as well make it unanimous, yes.
Motion passes unanimously for denial.
That was on ordinance twenty one dash fifty six. We still have on our agenda that must be dealt with in one way or another, uh, the ordinance and the resolution remaining.
So I would move for denial of ordinance twenty one dash fifty seven.
Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Bueller.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Resolution.
I would move for denial of resolution twenty one dash one sixty seven.
Okay, then to our city recorder for the vote. This kind of this point, routine, perfunctory, since we denied the others. Go ahead, Nicole.
Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Hi.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes care of that. We have one more item on our agenda. That's resolution twenty one dash one sixty eight. This is a fairly routine item. We have dozens of these come through here. This is on the twenty, excuse me, forty seven hundred South project. Where there's a real estate purchase, a warranty deed, perpetual easement, temporary construction easement. On that project for a home there. And so this is pretty routine, but it's there to the council.
Move for approval of resolution twenty one dash one sixty eight. Second.
Properly before us, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Bueller.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling. Councilman Fatisamani.
Hi.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
We do not have a need for a closed session. That completes our agenda, uh, for our council meeting tonight. We thank you all for coming and appreciate your participation. And with that, a final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objections, that was unanimous. Thank you.